Good evening and welcome to the regular school board meeting for November 12th, 2019, for Roseville area schools. Roll call, please.
Director Azar.
Here.
Director Shaw.
Here.
Director Johnson.
Here.
Treasurer Anderson.
Here.
Chair Goggins.
Here.
And Clerk Bogushevsky is here as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any agenda adjustments this evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Thank you. Any announcements or comments? Okay. We have a variety of people here this evening who are going to be giving community input. The first is Rosemond Barnes. Do we have anybody by the name of Rosemond Barnes? Okay. Second, we have Susan Montgomery. And if you can state your name and address when you begin. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I don't know if it's on.
Yes.
Okay. My address says, let's say the home address, so it's private, but I did list it on there. Good evening, members of the school, Roseville area school board. My name is Susan Montgomery. My son is a student in your district, and I have come to you this evening as a very concerned parent and community advocate of Ramsey County. Many issues I have already brought to staff, admin, district leaders, and
Even board members through the last couple of years, which seem to have gone nowhere. I have not seen any changes and honestly do not feel my voice for my son's needs or even other students have been truly heard or valued. My story is not unique either. Even though I feel alone in this unwanted journey, I am not. I have often said to many of you in this room during my efforts of prevention and awareness, not only am I trying to save my son, but also protect other children. Yet other students have suffered since I made these reports, and that absolutely breaks my heart. If changes would have been made timely and properly, some of the serious issues I have raised to numerous staff like maltreatment, bullying, sexual harassment, terroristic threats, educational neglect, IEP accommodations, racism, bias, and failed parent notifications, just to name a few, would maybe be, still, would not be on my list of concerns. I have a copy of the list if any of you shall need them for your viewing pleasure. Last spring, I testified at the Capitol where the Minnesota Department of Human, ah, excuse me, the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights were in attendance. The MDHR took my testimony serious and asked me to follow up with me, asked me to follow up for an interview. After an initial investigation at their office, they wanted to press charges against Rams for a serious incident I reported in 2018, and for every adult who neglected it. I didn't sign the paperwork, though, because I didn't want my son or other victims to be retaliated against any more than they already are or go through additional trauma. I had numerous meetings that I would have hoped led to action, and also had very hard but honest conversations that could have been teachable moments and things would just get better, but they didn't. I have since felt blacklisted and silenced for speaking up. Many staff that I had good relationships with told me things that were hurtful and/or no longer work here that were helping my family. Most recently, I reached out to an assistant principal at Ross on October 7th, 2019, for an incident that happened to my son on October 4th in his science class. That principal never got back to me, but last Thursday on November 7th, my son got in trouble, so she called me to come to the school. He was suspended for an incident I believe could have been avoided. And if two staff who promised to give him leadership programming in September would have followed through, maybe he wouldn't have been in trouble to begin with. There is often no tolerance rule when it comes to our students. They cannot defend themselves, they cannot be vulnerable, they cannot advocate for others, they cannot have weapons or drugs, so no excuses for their actions. However, my son alone has been through so much trauma in this district, as well as others, which staff knew about. So where is the redirection, the SEL and the PBIS? Which brings me lastly to say, I cannot believe that a white coach can sexually harass and assault students of color during a public basketball game around minor players and parents but still has a job. But as soon as my son makes a small mistake in private, everyone follows their policies and procedures to it too. I want to know, what are you actually doing about staff accountability, school climate, transparency, and student safety? Our kids cannot afford to wait for you any longer. We need answers as soon as possible.
Thank you for your testimony. Are you commentary? Next, we have Kristen Lindsay.
My child is a victim of assault in the Roseville School District. I will not further make any comments. I've reached out to a series of people in the district. I will refer all comments to my lawyer, who is Joshua Newville with Media, excuse me, Medea Law. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming, and we are looking into this situation. Thank you. Next, we have Josh Salistin.
Let me start by saying good evening to all the concerned parents that came out. Good evening to the panel. And most importantly, it is acts of the Roseville District Administration, ISD 623, on this day to actively open an investigation in pursuit of the Roseville District Policy 416 and 506, discrimination, harassment, bias prevention, grievance procedures, in order to address the issue or issues of assault and/or assaults being inflicted by staff upon minor children, and attempted cover-up of these documented facts, not allegations. More specific, it is acts of this panel that investigation be conducted due to the multiple violations above mentioned and above mentioned policies in addition to those applicable in subsections 217, 218, 313, 313, 3.18, 3.113, 4.1, 4.5, 4.6, 4.9, 6.0, and 7.0. It is further acts of this school board to submit a full summation of your findings and action or actions taken within a timely fashion, as well as a meeting scheduled with these concerned parents, as well as myself, because I'm a concerned family member. Your failure to comply would be taken as a silent admission of guilt in your complicity in this cover-up of the assault of minor children within the Roseville District. So with that being said, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. I reiterate that we are looking into this situation. Thank you for coming this evening. It's hard to hear a little bit. Kelly Cosell, did I miss?
Hello. My name's Kelly Cosell, and you have my address on the green sheet. I just want to make some comments around inclusive playgrounds as you move forward with the school board and the budget. I would like to see, I would like to start some community partnerships and really look at inclusive playgrounds, not meaning the minimum standards of the ADA, but meaning that a child in a wheelchair can accessibly play with another child, such as like a teeter-totter or a merry ground or something besides a ramp. This issue is a pretty hot issue throughout Minnesota. There's been a number of school districts that have collaborated, especially rural Minnesota, to start making this happen. Not only that, do I want to say, I want to say the Olmsted Plan says, you know, we need to include everybody in our communities, and so making these inclusive playgrounds would be including everybody in our communities. The last thing I want to see is a person in a wheelchair outside of the playground because it's, they just cannot play with the other kids. My other comment, and this is a completely different subject, would be nutrition. I would like to see future and for budgeting that we can have more than just apples, bananas, and oranges. It would be really nice to have grapes, pears, kiwis, you know, at least one or two times a week. I think the kids are tired of bananas, apples, and oranges, and while, I mean, we do do canned foods, or I know that there's canned foods, but just to keep that in mind when you guys are doing your budgets, to just look for diversity when it comes to fresh fruits and vegetables. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A number of people have testified and indicated that they would like to have a response, and we'll definitely get that out too. So I believe we've covered everybody. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, name? That moves us to reports and non-action items. This evening, we have amplifying student, I'm sorry, gifts, yes, please.
Yes, we'd like to thank the following for their gifts and contributions to our school district. Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, a monetary gift for students in need at Central Park Elementary School. King of Cane's Lutheran Church, the Sage Family, a monetary gift for the Roseville Area Senior Program at Fairview Community Center. We'd like to thank E-Trade Financial and Rose, we, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, financial gift for the Roseville Area Senior Program at Fairview Community Center. Mr. Carwash, Attention Laura Evans, four twenty-dollar Platinum Express Car Wash coupons for the 623 Walk Run Raffle at Fairview Community Center. Raising Cane's, Kina Dove, the General Manager, a gift basket for the 623 Walk Run Raffle at Fairview Community Center. The Outback Steakhouse, three twenty-dollar gift certificates, the 623 Walk Run Raffle at Fairview Community Center. We'd like to thank Pete and Nicole Lindstrom, a monetary gift for, to help out with the lunch debt at Falcon Heights Elementary in honor of Philando Castile at Falcon Heights Elementary School. David Schrader, a monetary gift to be used at the principal's discretion at Parkview Center School. Gloria Given, a monetary gift for the Parkview Center School Media Center Library at Parkview. Timothy and Lucille Plunkett, a monetary gift for the Rose Bowl Debate Tournament for Roseville Area High School. Falcon Heights Lauderdale Lions Club, a monetary gift for activities and athletics at Roseville Area High School. The Ramsey 81, 81 Memorial Foundation, a monetary gift for the football program at Roseville Area High School. We'd like to thank Tom and Janet Thule, a monetary gift for Trap Shooting Club at Roseville Area High School, and Troy and Kristia Raverity, monetary gift for the Trap Shooting Club at Roseville Area High School. We thank our generous community.
Thank you. We are so appreciative to our community for their support. So that moves us on to reports and non-action items. We have one this evening, amplifying student voice and the leaders in training. And Dr. Jenny Leach will be introducing.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and eventually, thank you for having us. We were asked this evening to present on how, as a district, are we working to amplify student voice? And we use the guiding question, are we elevating student voice in order to impact the power, structure, and culture in our district? And just a broad overview would be our district work with all staff, our community, and all students, increasing student voice, which also impacts our absent narrative work. We're very focused on our student and community storytelling in circles at every building and throughout the district. We're very invested in ensuring that all of our curricular and extracurricular programs are represented by all students, as well as our pedagogy and instructional strategies in terms of de-centering whiteness. And so we asked all the principals at each of the buildings, this guiding question, how are they, how are our buildings working to elevate student voice? And I just wanted to give you a sample of some of the responses that we've heard from across the district. This happens when I present generally. So there's operational items, like students participate on interview teams, there's many leadership opportunities for students. But there's also impactful changes to our daily schedule, our handbook, the choices students are making, and also a shift in our vision, our visioning process as students participate in that. One of the lower right-hand corners, that's Central Park's vision, is a global community empowering each other to learn, lead, and succeed. Can only be realized when we all have one equal voice, and that certainly includes students. And then the rest of the responses, I thought a key response was how we conference with families now. When teachers are asking families, how can I be a great teacher for your child, right? What do I need to know? What does your child need? And of course, our restorative work, and again, the story circles. Many folks are familiar with morning meetings at the elementary level. Now we're moving towards story circles, ensuring that all students are represented and having a voice. And so I wanted to be very brief, because the star of the show, and again, the focus of this presentation is on elevating student voice. And I'm very proud to introduce our leaders in training group, led by staff member Mr. Janie Johnson.
The burden of expectation that was placed on my soldier had overwhelmed me at school, home, with parents, friends, way too many expectations. But LIT helped me celebrate every success of my life, even if I didn't exceed the expectations every single time.
My family has had a pattern of abuse, and for years, this has defined who I am. The LIT program has brought out my potential and showed me that I do have a voice.
Fear of not being good enough was always an issue for me when it came to school and social interactions, artistic, and public speaking. LIT helped me to own that I am an artist and that I am good enough.
Rejection. At one point in my life, I was able to speak with such confidence in myself. That was until I was rejected by the one person I did accept, the one person I did it most to accept me, my father. It was not until I joined LIT that I found my true power and that I found my voice.
Judgment was something that made me feel ashamed of who I am. LIT has accepted the special parts of who I am.
Low self-esteem has been something I've struggled with for a long time. This has given me the mindset that what I say has no worth, but the LIT program has helped me find my voice and gain confidence in myself.
Hi, everyone. We have been asked to come here tonight to talk about our experiences with youth voice and leadership. It is an honor to be here, and on behalf of my LIT family, we thank you. We were told to provide a brief overview of the presentation that our LIT program gave during the staff workshop day. This was our second time speaking at the all-staff teachers workshop. We spoke two years ago about the power of tearing down relational walls that divide teachers and students. This year, we spoke about the it factor.
This year, as a LIT team, we attempted to explain the phenomenon we call it. We asked questions like, why do some educational leaders, students, and school organizations have it and some don't?
As a school community, how do we get it? How do we keep from losing it once we've got it? As a school community, do we have it? And if not, what are we going to do to get it? Are we willing to pay the price of change to experience it?
We believe two crucial things in a school district that has it. One, an unmistakable love for each other. Two, a mentoring culture that changes lives.
The second question we've been asked was, how do LIT students elevate student voice in the district? We do this by empowering a loving and caring mentoring culture and after-school programming in Roseville area schools. Where students were mentoring students, where students were mentoring students, we have been doing this for five years now. We, on average, have 25 LIT high school students volunteering over 450 hours a year in mentoring younger elementary students within our district at five different schools, Harambe, Brimhall, EDW, Rams, and Central Park. We mentor over 100 younger students. An example of this would be me leading girls' group after-school with Central Park students. The girls opened up and were able to share stories they felt like nobody would understand or know. There wasn't a dry eye in the room.
Me and the boys over here, we came in to the Roseville Area Middle School, and we started a soccer group. We saw that there were boys that were struggling, that needed just older men to just talk to them, you know, and to have fun and be supportive, and we started that soccer group, and it was such a big success, and it really just changed the environment of Rams as a whole. We have been asked to give our voice to empower many different community projects, not just Roseville area schools' after-school programming. This is a list that we are very proud of, and we have worked so hard to achieve this
Our LIT program has developed a relationship with Spire Credit Union and met the president, Dan Stoltz. Mr. Jay has developed a relationship with Dan, and he has asked our LIT community to come and speak to him about what young people need in bank services and to help become more successful. Dan also gave us a tour, asked us our process for leadership development and what we believe. Dan heard our voice.
Our LIT program developed a relationship with Target Corporation while also doing some work with them on product design and having youth voice in marketing. We toured their downtown offices several times and met with key leaders, managers, and workers. Target Corporation heard our voice.
Last year, our LIT community spoke at MCEA Leaders Conference about the importance of emotional healthy leadership and shared our stories and experiences with emotional pain, hurt, depression, and the ability to find hope and love in the midst of these challenges. That speaking was amazing. We were very open and very emotional. Both teachers and students really felt each other out of what we had to say.
Last year, we were speakers at the Out of School Time Conference at the River Center in St. Paul. We spoke about the power of becoming a victor and not a victim. We spoke on youth voice and the power of personal, of persons' personal stories. Karen Shaw heard our voice.
We've done leadership development presentations to adult faculty from a youth perspective at elementary schools, Edgerton and Harambe. The students heard our voice.
We've led eight different community Izzy's, intentional social interactions with over 50 people from the community attending each time, dealing with subjects such as overcoming racism, leadership growth, emotionally healthy leadership, et cetera. They heard our voice.
Our youth voices influenced Courtney Harness, director at Shoreview YMCA. He interviewed us, and we came up with the idea of having a free summer membership for students to keep teens off the street in the summer. We created what is now the Get Summer program, and Courtney Harness heard our voice.
This Friday, we will be speaking at Metro State for the dismantling white supremacy conference and leading a presentation entitled, "Tearing Down Racial Walls," and they are going to hear our voice.
We have built a significant relationship with Roseville Lutheran Church and Pastor Sarah. We led a community Izzy there last May and had a significant discussion with over 75 contributors about being a multi-ethnic and multi-generational community. Roseville Lutheran Church heard our voice.
We will be speaking at the Roseville Optimist Club meeting and engaging leaders on the topic of the leadership it factor. Optimist Club is going to hear our voice.
We have also tirelessly engaged homeless shelters and starvation services such as Our Savior's Housing, Simpsons Housing, Feed My Starving Children, The Dwelling Youth Shelter, and passionately helped them engage the needs of the community, and we heard each other's voice there. And when I was at My Savior, Our Savior's Housing, I met a man. His name was Jamie. He was an African-American man in his late 30s, and Jamie had a story. He told me, as we sat down and ate the food that we made for him. We ate together, and I heard a story, and he told me that he had one leg that was fractured everywhere. All bones were fractured. It was from a car accident that he'd recently been in. He told me that the lover of his wife, his ex-wife, had raped his daughter, and that was his story. And now he was at a homeless shelter trying to heal the wounds that he had gone through. And that was his story. We heard his voice.
Another question we were asked was, what improvement have students experienced in their classrooms in terms of teachers recognizing and honoring student voice? In history, through an African-American lens, my teacher gave us a space to share our feelings on a student bringing the Confederate flag to school during USA Day. She allowed us to talk about this pressing issue during the class period while also pushing us to get seats at the table and advocate for change. This motivated me to join Student Council. However, we think there needs to be responsibility when facilitating youth voice and cultural conversations. An example of this would be when our white teacher brought in faculty of color to facilitate the conversation on the Confederate flag that day.
So over the years at school, I've absolutely noticed a shift in our classrooms. It seems that teachers are asking us questions and really want to gain new perspectives. We're finally having open conversations about race and issues that are going on presently in our society and in our culture. Something I've had the privilege to write about in my journalism class was AP classrooms and how the minority students feel that their voices are overshadowed by white students' voices. And that was something that I'm very happy that I got to do because I was able to write about voices that aren't being heard, so I was able to present those voices.
And while talking about voices, I want to thank Aldo, or Dr. Secoli, as many of you guys know him. He's done everything to help us in every step of our journey. And one very important thing he was, he has done is his decision to hire staff of color in Roseville area schools, who then hired more African-American and different staffs of color in order to give recognition to the voice of young students of color, and that has given a voice to them.
Now, I hate to be the one to say that there's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of work to be done. Sometimes it feels like if you're not in Student Council or these groups, that there's no direction for student voice. We don't know what we have the power to do. A lot of times, we felt like, at the schools that we volunteer at, that they don't appreciate or accept our feedback. Certain schools have accepted and in turn seen the power of our voice. As a group, we have witnessed the impact when youth voice is taken seriously, but also the damage it has on us when we are rejected. But you know what? We are hopeful leaders, and we believe that Roseville is committed to the youth vision. That's because all of you wonderful leaders, give yourself a round of applause. Now keep your applause going for my amazing mentor, Mr. Dave. I'm gonna
I just want to say, on behalf of these guys and just part of them, there is, Dr. King used a term called the beloved community. To do this work, and even the challenges I know that were set before this, and to be able to get this, it's work, it's work to be a multi-ethnic beloved community. There's a lot of pain that goes into it, there's a lot of tears that go into it, there's a lot of challenges. There's a lot of challenges. There's frustration that comes into it. But I will say, investing in these students and developing a leader within them five years ago and being able to step back and watch these students develop, their younger students, and develop the community, there's only a word I can say, it's a blessing. There really is, it's a blessing. For them to give up other things like football and dance and do that because they want to invest in younger kids and develop that, or work on their speaking voice, or go to a homeless shelter in our community and make a difference, I'm proud, super proud, of the work that they're doing. And I'm a small fracture, but the parents and people like Jenny and Aldo and the list goes on, Karen, they'll want to be able to help us and I do think take that community. I know it's challenging, but we believe what we spoke on about the IT factor. We believe that it takes radical love. We really do. It's a word that gets...it doesn't need to be shunned to the church word that'll only be using it. We do need radical love. Love that presses through. And we do need a shift, if I want to say anything, a real shift on radical mentoring, getting into the stories of people's life. Rohit said it best, to sit down with somebody else, whether they're homeless or rich, black or white, whatever it is, and hear each other's stories and really be present with that. To see these guys do this at 16, 17, what I was doing at 16 and 17, we're near that part. So, really, really do. I want to just quickly, a person who really means a lot to me and to this program, Jose's been a significant person to me and Aldo on this journey and to Karen. And his dad, Carlos, we give him a hand to come up real quickly. I want to close with Carlos's words from a parent about the power of youth voice and impact from the LIT perspective. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Good evening. I just want to thank you all and congratulate you for having this program. I've been gone from home and coming back home and seeing my kid thriving and it just means a lot to me and I cannot say nothing else but thank you. When Mr. Jay invited me, I got a little excited and then he said, "You only have like a few minutes." You've got so much to tell, Mr. Jay. But just to keep it short, I think, I don't know if something like this is being done in other schools or even in the country, but this is needed for our kids, for our communities. And like somebody say, you know, you should give yourself a round of applause, you know? More like this sometimes. I do that sometimes myself. When nobody comes up and says something for me, I just go like this, you know? I just encourage myself. So, thank you. Thank you. And my home is a perfect sample to keep this program going. Thank you.
Sister Lulu, who is a mentor of mine at the African-American church, I really had a faith shift with. She used to always tell me this when it comes to your organization or your team there. She says, "You may not be where you used to be, or you may not be where you want to be, but thank God you're not where you used to be." As a school district, we may not be where we want to be, but sometimes, you know what? We're not where we used to be. And to celebrate the small wins along the way, to encourage each other, you've got a lot of work to do, but we are not where we used to be and we can celebrate that. And that's something, we do this together. We do. We have to be family together in that sense. So, everybody did clap last time. Give yourself a clap, please. It's time for the watching. All right? Thank you very much. And thanks for giving us this time. Thank you, Jenny Lake, and everybody, Karen and Aldo. Thank you. Yeah. You have questions, please?
Well, not a question, comment. I've had the opportunity to do a few things with you guys just last week. And I must say, every time I have the opportunity to talk to you guys and sit in a room and hear you talk, I am always more impressed with all of you. The thing that...all the things that you do are remarkable. And by the way, you go to school. That's it. And you're very good at it. The only thing I would add to that wonderful list that you have put out, because I know there are things you did not...that you had to leave out, but I was fortunate enough to be in the room when you had the roundtable last week with Department of Education Commissioner, Mary Catherine Ricker. I promise you, she heard your voice. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. Really mean that. Thank you so much.
Well, and I would like to let board members know that they will also be...they've got an hour presentation at the Minnesota School Board Association in January. So we're very excited for their participation in that as well.
That's part of me with Kitty there. So Kitty's been our ally with that, so thank you too.
Are there any other questions or anybody else that they wanted to? Okay. That's awesome. Thank you very much. That moves us to action items. And the first one we have this evening is canvassing reelection results. For that, we have Michelle Alon speaking.
So we just had an election on November 5th. We had three candidates running for three school board seats. Elections were held. Randy County's put together an abstract of both cast press and some board related candidates.
Does a resolution need to be read in this situation?
I'm sure the resolution needs to be read in ways of reading.
Do I have a motion to waive the reading of the revocation?
It's removed.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. If I can have the clerk make the motion of the resolution?
Yes. Madam Chair, a move of the school board approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district reelection held on November 5, 2019.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call.
Certainly. Director Azar.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Treasurer Anderson.
Aye.
Chair Goggins.
Aye.
And Clerk Bogushevsky votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have canvassed the reelection results. We will have Director Anderson and Director Bogushevsky continuing to serve on the school board for another four years. And then we will have Dr. Rose Chu joining us in January. So thank you for your service and continued service. And unfortunately, we'll be losing Director Azar. A few more meetings of her wonderful input and advice and really appreciate the eight years that you've served on this board. Made a difference. Thank you. The next item we have, an action item, is the 2019-2020 Harambe Elementary School calendar adjustment with Dr. Jenny Lake.
Thank you. The Harambe admin and staff cut a error in the year-round option for this school year. We're proposing to move the end of term is February 13th, so of course the reporting date should follow the end of the term, moving from February 7th to February 14th.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve her recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, we unanimously approve that.
Thank you.
That moves us to Policy 432, Tobacco-Free Environment. This is a second reading and Dr. Jenny Lake, it is.
And as a reminder, the only changes to this policy are the addition of delivery devices in terms of electronic cigarettes and at the end of the policy, the language American Indian tribe.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
They're moved in.
Second.
Here's the second tip. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, we approve the revised Policy 432.
Thank you.
That moves us to the next policy, which is Policy 420, Mandated Reporting of Child Abuse or Neglect. This is a revised document and this is the second reading and Dr. Lucille Mottley will take us.
Good evening, Dr. Sikoli, Chair Goggins, and members of the board. As you mentioned, this is the second reading and we're looking for approval for Policy 420.
Are there any questions or comments? Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
I'll get a motion.
I'm sorry. That would be rather...
I move that we approve Board Policy 420. In data reporting of child abuse or neglect is...I'll second.
A second? Okay, now I'll try that again. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, we've approved the Policy 420 of mandated student reporting. That moves us to Policy 528, Dispensation of Medication for Students. This is again revised, it's a second reading, and we have Dr. Lucille Mottley.
It's me again, looking for...this is the second reading for Policy 528 and there was one change regarding the language of parent or guardian, 3.1 on page 1.
There's also a change in sunscreen. Is that a change or is that a change?
Right, right. That was the change from the first reading. This is the second change after the first reading. Just some language to clarify, parent or guardian.
Parent or guardian, I see.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept this policy as now written. Policy 528, Dispensation of Medication for Students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, we've unanimously approved the Policy 528 for dispensation of medication for students. That moves us to board reports. Are there any board reports to see?
You guys start.
Who would like to start?
I'll start. I'll be brief. The past couple of weeks, I had an opportunity to attend several things. One, the district curriculum advisory committee. We're going to be going over this a bit further in detail at our study session, but just a real brief introduction to the new course, Drones 2, which we will talk about later. And then we had a really good discussion. Jake introduced the DCAC to our 2019 MC proficiency reports. Had some really good discussions, some questions that the DCAC went through. Some real positive discussions there. Had an opportunity to attend the wonderful presentation, Roseville Area High School, the Drama Club, Working the Musical. I thought it was fantastic. We have a lot of talent. There's so much talent all over the board, musicians, actors, stage crew, directors. I was really impressed with working. I know, I'm sure you'll be talking about it as well, but I'm very impressed that I went to that. And then finally, something that I've done every single year while I've been on the board, the Edgerton Elementary School Veterans Day Program with my colleague, Dr. Frank Shaw and Superintendent Sikoli. I've gone every single year and there are some things that I can't attend in this district. I try to attend things, but this is always something that I have not missed, that I've always wanted to go. It's always just a very time-sobering, but very uplifting presentation to, especially when all the veterans and active-duty military staff get to go up with their connection to Edgerton and describe what branch they're in and just their connection. It could be a daughter, a granddaughter, or grandson or son, just really moving. I will continue to keep going at it, I'm glad for the next four years, so I'm glad to attend.
I'm going to borrow this. There's really not much else to say about Working. It was brilliantly done. I admit, it's my first time seeing it, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention that...I'm sorry if I get this name wrong, Michael Valloy. He had the second-to-last song when we were...Saturday performance and his mic went out. No one noticed that his mic went out because his projection was absolutely impeccable. Truly, the only reason I know his mic went out was my daughter, who was running sound, came up and was like, "Yeah, his mic went out." Great job, everybody who was involved with that. Very...not your traditional musical. So, really well done. Let's see. I had the opportunity to go to AMSD Association of Metro City School Districts. We had...we heard from Dennis Olson, who's the Minnesota Office of Higher Education Commissioner. And he gave us a really good overview of what his department does and it was, you know, it was really good. Attended the...I was not able to attend the Veterans Day, but I was able to attend the Ross Quarterly, District Quarterly Meeting of Local elected officials at Edgerton. And as part of that, we actually got to hear the choir practicing for that. Yeah, this brings tears to your eyes, they're really good. I also was able to sit in on the roundtable discussion with LIT members and Education Commissioner Mary Catherine Ricker. Thank you, Josh, for grabbing me. I was in...I happened to be in the area at the time and I was like, "Oh, you're going to want to see this." Really compelling stuff. For...I'm sure people know that the last couple of days, including tonight, there have been a lot of concerts. So this is, you know, tonight is the third night of concerts for choir and band and orchestra. A literal passing of the baton from Mr. Moriarty to Ian McKnight. I was able to attend his first two concerts and they were absolutely amazing. He...Mr. McKnight picked a piece called Diamond Tide, which literally had the percussionists dipping their...their cymbals, basically a lot of things dipping them in water to get a very, you know, otherworldly sound. Just very, very cool stuff. Matt Tenel, key piece for me, One Life Beautiful, just absolutely...if you...you can see all these still on CTV, Northland, so if you...North River, so you can still go and hear it. Lauren McLean, also a new conductor for the Philharmonic Group. Started things off a little differently with The Barber of Seville and ended with The Best of Queen. So, she's...it was a very...it was a very fun concert. Last but not least, I'd like to give a shout-out to Emmy Johnson and Sam Terry, who were picked as representatives from Roseville Area High School to join members from 46 high school bands to perform at the St. Olaf Festival Bands Saturday. Basically, they get all these kids together, they practice their music for, oh, five, six, seven, eight hours, and then they do a performance. And it was absolutely incredible, so.
Where was that again?
St. Olaf. St. Olaf.
St. Olaf, okay.
I had the 916 meeting last Wednesday, and I have some stuff that I was going to pass around, just so you can see it. One is the enrollment in ninth level form programs and our students, and then the population in general, if you're interested. And then, this is a 2020 Legislative Priorities Report from the intermediate school districts, and it talks a little bit about one of the reports we had, which was on, let me see if I can find it so I can tell you what it is exactly. It's mental health classrooms, education mental health classrooms. They had a first-year success in the education mental health classroom, where they saw a lot of great things, like two students avoided out-of-home placement, families avoided medical costs, and these are for students that are really struggling with some mental health issues. And so I wanted to send this around as well, so that you can take a peek at it. Also, we had a young woman named Emily Johnson come in and talk about what it's like to be a school-based therapist in the intermediate school district and in the alternative high school there. We don't have very many students at their alternative high school, but I would imagine in any high school or alternative high school, a lot of the stories are the same. She talked about some other things that students struggle with when they are not having academic success, alcohol issues, drug issues, whether in the home or outside, and how important it is to give students access to care, because a lot of those kids don't have any access, and so they need their school therapists and counselors to be, to be the ones for them, because they're not getting much help outside. So, it was a really good eye-opener that sometimes it's easy just to assume the kids that need help are getting it somewhere, but a lot of them aren't. So, just to be ever vigilant of those kids and also the educators that are working with those children because of the stress they can put on them as well. So, I thought it was a really interesting report. And things aren't going well at night succeed, so that's my, that's my report. Thank you.
Just a couple of things, along with yourself and a couple of board members, as you get a chance to attend the quarterly local government meeting hosted by Dr. Secoli, which I always find very beneficial, interesting to see what's going on. For those who don't know, it's the staff and elected officials from the seven communities that the district serves, as well as our county representation. And we had Minnesota House legislator there this time, too. So, we just do a roundtable and share what's going on. I find it very available. We had a nice tour of the school as well, Edgerton, to see what's going on there in terms of the facility work. So, it's very valuable, and I'm very thankful to Dr. Secoli for hosting those quarterly. I think that all the attendees find them very worthwhile to attend. Second thing, this Saturday, I will be attending the pre-delegate assembly prep meeting for the upcoming December delegate assembly of the MSBA, at which delegates from board members elected throughout the state will approve the legislative agenda and priorities that MSBA will present to the legislature when it comes into session next year. Lot of words in a very long sentence with very many implied commas, but there you go. So, if the other two folks, I think Curtis and Todd are both delegates also with me, but I will go. So, if you can't make it, that's fine, I'll share with you what I discovered or any highlights. Typically, what they do is they pass out a hard copy book of all of the various items that are going to be voted on at the assembly itself in December, and it's a little more ability to share the background, why it's in the book, why it's been proposed by certain districts, what the story is behind it, that kind of thing. So, if I see you there, great. If not, then I'll share with you when I were. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I ate lunch with Minnesota Thursday with the fourth graders at Central Park. Had a great time and enjoyed that. So, it was locally sourced squash was the main thing that was featured, and, but for me, featuring the fourth graders was, they are also locally sourced. I attended the Edgerton PTA meeting last night, and it was one of the best PTA meetings I've ever been to. I mean, I've been to a lot of PTA meetings, and this, this one was great. We had Emily Matson, who's ELL teacher there at Edgerton, speaking on research that she's doing for her thesis on parent involvement and engagement. She pointed out the difference between involvement and engagement, or something I'd never thought of, or at least right now, the way we're characterizing parent involvement is in doing things that the school thinks you should do. That is, the school makes the rules, and then the parents become involved in what the school is doing. Whereas, in contrast, parent engagement is where the parents come up with the ideas and are actively engaged, not so much just sort of doing what the school is asking them to do, but bringing their own ideas and energy to it. And she had interviewed people from the Corret community about their involvement and engagement. She had a lot to say, and there were a lot of parents there, some from the Corret community, who also had things to say. It was really a lively session that I thought was positive all the way around, so I really enjoyed that. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Number of people have covered what I was going to cover, so I'll just limit it to a few things. One is, there was the Fairview Community Public Meeting last week, and I know several of you were there, so I think like four or five of us were there. But this was an opportunity for anyone who had commentary, further commentary on Fairview to have an opportunity to speak. We've had several public meetings over the last year and a year or so, and there's been a lot of input, and there's been a lot of adjustment to plans to accommodate the concerns of the community. And that meeting actually closed with one of the more vocal members of the group thanking the school district for making a number of the changes in it to adjust to concerns raised. And we've been extremely fortunate to have our partners, Krause Anderson, KFG, and LSE Architects, do a really phenomenal job of responding to the concerns raised by the community and justice. So, I want to thank them for their work and thank the community for letting us know what their concerns are and being actively involved, so we have the opportunity to address some prior to plans getting finalized, because we will be sending out those bids shortly here. I had an opportunity to attend the Ramsey Community Visioning Session, which they're trying to determine where they'd like the community to go, and education is one of the topics that's covered. I don't know if anybody has an interest, but they have a few more sessions coming up that are listed on their website. But it was a very interesting process, and particularly interesting for me to hear what folks had to say. I thought that was, was very valuable, a lot about around, you know, special education. There was a student, not from our district, but who had been in special education, thought there were IEP kids, and the IEP kids were treated differently, and thought there was some great opportunity there. There was a lot about social justice, about, you know, how do we help serve all the different students that come to our community? And it was just a really great session. Wanted to let, I also went last night to the Central Park PTA meeting. I hadn't been to anything in that building for a while, so I thought I had a free evening, I'd take the opportunity. And that was really fun. They have a very engaged group of parents. It's relatively small, but it's a very engaged and active group. And it was really interesting for me to hear about how the What I Need time that we talked about last spring is starting to be implemented, and we're well into it, and in a week or so, all the grades will have it. And also, the project that they're doing in that, in Central Park, to get the voice of a lot of the underrepresented communities heard. And they've had a, they've tried to pick, you know, five families from some of the different ethnic groups to come together in the same room, trying, keeping it to about 25 people, to all share their perspectives and translators and going back and forth, and evidently it was phenomenally exciting, and people were so engaged, and they hope to eventually share some recommendations with staff and share their experiences, etc. It just sounded like a really, really neat program, and wonderful to have different groups at the same time from the principal's perspective, and I thought that was really neat to be hearing about. Wanted to let you know that we have, I applied, working with Jay Fondalindi for the Magna War again this year. This time, we're doing absent narratives, kind of the work around culturally responsive curriculum portion of the compass that we've heard a lot about, and it's such exciting work that we'll try to share that with some other folks in terms of the value. Obviously, we still have a long way to go, like everything else we've talked about this evening, but some exciting developments there. Okay, having completed the agenda before the board, I adjourn the meeting. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we will begin the study session.